Welcome, everyone, to Tuesday, October 3, 2023 city council meeting. Call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino, Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. Next, we will have silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the citizens of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Mitchell Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, October 6 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 7 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is agenda approvals, additions, and/or deletions. Does the city council have anything they would like to remove? Seeing none, we move on to presentations. First would be ostomy proclamation day. I'm sorry, I forget your name, sir.
Dan Schockley.
Dan Schockley, would you please join me?
We meet again. So, on behalf of Ostomy Awareness Day, approximately 275, 725,000 Americans have ostomy, approximately 100,000, 100,000 new ostomy procedures performed each year. And whereas ostomy continues to... I think I did this last time, too.
It's a merger.
I don't know why. Ostomy or conditions, conditions, surgeries, and amicur at any age does not lower life expectancy. Longingly though, efforts on the United States Ostomy Association of America Incorporated and its over 3,000 affiliate support groups, Americans needs and surgeries to are becoming more aware of opportunities for education, mutual aid, advocacy, support that have such great benefit to them that they families can. Whereas, the United States of America celebrates Ostomy Awareness Day with the United Ostomy Association of America annually on the first Saturday of October. And whereas, the city of Galt is committed to increasing public understanding of ostomy to eventually help dispel the fear those who undergo the surgery as well as the fear that confronts these families, this day can serve as a reminder to the American public that this is a life-saving and life-re restoring surgery. Would you like to say any words, sir?
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank you for bringing awareness to this. This is, it's very, actually very encouraging that someone could have this serious, but it's not life-ending or it's not desperate to do amazing.
Mayor and the city council, thank you for the opportunity. On behalf of the United Ostomy Association of America, we want to thank the city of Galt for recognizing the 7th of October as Ostomy Awareness Day. And I'm an 11-year ostimate. I was diagnosed after my first colonoscopy at 55, or 51 years old. And as a result, I've been diagnosed with a hereditary colon cancer syndrome. As a result of that, I ended up having a permanent ostomy, and I go about my life as if nothing happened. If I didn't say anything, you'd never know it. And I just want to be a source of inspiration and encouragement for the community. And I had the opportunity a week ago today to be at the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and supervisor Rich Desmond presented his proclamation, or resolution. And then we went over to Senator Roger Neal's office, and he presented his Senate concurrent resolution that was passed on the Senate floor on the 28th of August. And that's the first resolution of its kind in the entire state of California.
Well done, sir.
And I want to say that my wife is with us, with me tonight, Paula, and then my wound nurse from the VA, Joyce Ross, she's retired now. We've known each other for years, so she came all the way down from, I believe, Placerville to attend this. And so, thank you very much for the opportunity, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Makes us an annual pleasure.
Okay.
There's no skies in there.
Okay, next is C2, Galt Community of Character Coalition Pride and Community Award.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, our city staff. My name's Ralph Cortez. I represent the Galt Community Character of Coalition. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present our 2023 Pride and Community Award. Valente Ariza Senior is someone who deserves recognition for making our community a better place. Valente fits the definition of someone who demonstrates that character trait, pride in community, when he saw something that needed to be done and did it without being asked. Valente knew that people in Galt of all ages could benefit from getting out and playing pickleball to keep in shape and just get together with neighbors and other Galt residents and families. The fact that there were no pickleball courts in Galt did not stop him. In fact, he organized other interested residents and began chalking picketball court lines when the tennis courts at Galt Community Park were not being used. While this was a very laboring job, it was worth it when more and more people started getting involved. A recent event brought over 50 players of all ages to the newly-formed Galt Pickleball Club Games. With so many young people joining, pickleball is sure to grow. Valente Arizia Senior has made a real difference in our Galt community and is a true role model for pride and community. And he was nominated by Darren Lapel. I have his award here. Just a, just a quick note that our next award is going to be for responsibility. And we encourage the public to, it's in the Herald, and then we have flyers in the back for your nomination forms. So, next, next will be responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Planning Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2022/23.
Sure. And tonight with us, we have Jeff Hood, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission to present this year's annual report.
Well, I guess I don't have to read the first sentence of my speech now, introducing myself. So, good evening, Mayor Vandenberg and council. It's my pleasure to present the council with the Planning Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2022/23. It's attached in your packet for tonight's meeting. And this report outlines the commission's responsibilities and activities. The Planning Commission plays a vital role in ensuring the continued growth and success of the city of Galt by taking action on a variety of development applications and guaranteeing the integrity of the city's general plan is maintained and city ordinances are complied with. The Planning Commission makes decisions on entitlements such as subdivision maps, design review, use permits, and variances. The commission will also make recommendations to the city council on amendments to the general plan and the development code. The Planning Commission worked on a number of high-profile projects this year, including the vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for the veranda at Simmerhorn Ranch Project, modified design review for the Parlin Oaks subdivision, and the modified conditional use permit and building expansion for Walmart. We also approved two conditional use permits and design reviews for separate truck yards on Live Oak. In addition, the Planning Commission made recommendations to the city council to approve the Senate Bill 9 ordinance and to approve the resolution for the 2021-2029 housing element, including rezones and ordinance modifications. The Planning Commission also approved the annual CIP, General Plan Conformance Check, as required by law, and recommended approval of the annual general plan. This past year, we've also tried to allow for greater public participation by including more public workshops and study sessions in our meetings. We at the Planning Commission appreciate the opportunity to work with staff and dive into the development projects as well as the general plan and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission does not hesitate to roll up our sleeves and get to work in order to help make projects work for Galt. I'd like to thank my fellow current commissioners for their efforts. That includes Vice Chair Dan De Nier, Keith Jones, Dan Gerling, and Bonnie Rodriguez. And that concludes my report. And I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve the community and to provide this report.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for serving. Does the council have any questions?
Yeah, just, not really a question, but just a comment. I just want to say, obviously you know how important your role is at Planning Commission. I mean, contrary to what many people in this community think, a lot of the development decisions that happen in this city don't even make it this far. They land with you guys. It's a huge responsibility, especially as you know, in a town where the topic of growth can be very controversial, whether it's wanted or not wanted. It's always has been and always will be. So, I think, you know, I just want to thank you for taking on that big responsibility because it is a big one. I think personally, we got the best planning commission I've seen in, I don't know, as long as I can remember, in my opinion. It's a good group of people. Not everybody's obviously of one mind. There's a diversity there, but I think you guys have, there's a good representative, representation there. And, and for me personally, I want to thank you guys for your recommendation on the Summerfield project, even though the council didn't follow the direction. I took it very seriously, and so I appreciate you guys doing the good work, even though sometimes we may not agree with you guys, and we do. But keep up the good work, and thank you for what you guys do. Appreciate it.
You know, I appreciate that, too, and I agree. We have a great group of people. We all come from different backgrounds, have different perspectives, but we all work together very well, and we all have the same goal of, you know, doing the best for this community so that, you know, we know growth is coming. It has to come, you know, based on, you know, the state of California rules, regulations, laws. And so, we just want to make sure that that's done in the best manner to serve our current residents, businesses, and also those future residents and businesses, so we can all live in the best community that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I would like to make a comment, Jeff, thank you for your service, and thank you for the whole commission. Thank you. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sandu.
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. We spoke before the meeting, but I appreciate your work on the commission and bringing your previous experience with the city of Lodi to it and giving that different perspective. And so, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate you being available to me when we, when we meet. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. How many comments do we have, if any?
None right now.
Thank you. Next is reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would like to report, we have, we was a scheduled meeting on South Sacramento Conservation Agency, but due to some agenda item, some error or difficulty, they canceled it. So, next week, we can have that meeting. Certainly we'll report back to the council next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, I'd like to report back on the League of California Cities 2023 Annual Conference that I attended a couple of weeks ago. And I won't go through every session that I attended, but I will say that I did attend a few that were pretty good. But first, the week kind of started off with a meeting with the Sacramento Valley Division, which is all of the cities kind of from Sacramento North, including a lot of small cities. So, it's a good group to work with and network with about how they do things in their small community. We had a new president appointed, a council member from Citrus Heights, Portia Milton. And I was reappointed to a policy committee on revenue and taxation. And then I just wanted to make, have my colleagues made aware of a fundraiser that's going on for the Sacramento Valley Division. It's a cornhole tournament. And I'll pass this along. It's Friday, the 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00 in West Sacramento. So, if you guys want to get a team, feel free. I will be out there with myself and actually Planning Commissioner Hood as a team for the cornhole tournament. And so, I'll pass this along to see if you're interested. Also, in the opening session of the, of the conference, there were several remarks by several people, but one of the things that was noted is Ranch Cordova Vice Mayor David Sander, who's been on their council for, since inception of the city, is now going to be the incoming president of the National League of Cities, which is going to be good to have him represent our city and state. So, that was good to hear. I did attend a California cannabis seven years after legalization seminar. It was pretty interesting. The question is, was how, how is it doing? And so, one of the things that I came away with was the California Department of Cannabis Control has several grants through the governor's office for cities to assist in opening cannabis dispensaries. One of the other main points that I heard from many cities, including the cities, City of Desert Hot Springs, is that continual, the continual revaluation of the city's portion of the taxes that are applied to these dispensaries and other forms of commercial cannabis should be evaluated every couple of years. In that area, they have had to readjust, lower their tax rate because businesses were struggling because of the black market. So, their mayor said they had to lower it to keep the dispensaries in business. And then, one last thing that I really learned from it was the cities that are successful at monitoring cannabis dispensaries usually are doing it through code enforcement as opposed to law enforcement. And the reason is, is that the municipal code is what dictates how the dispensary is to run, and, and code enforcement is the, is the arm of most cities that, that monitors that. There was a case study also, the conference breakout session I went to on response to homelessness in the city of Rialto. The Rialto Police Department teamed up with a social work action group, which is actually a nonprofit group, to enhance the city's response to homelessness. They partner also with county social workers, like we do here, and then rehabilitation centers to get clients into PDs really only there for the safety and cleanups of the camps and also the storage of property when it needs to be stored. The city of Rialto said it's very expensive, what their project and what they do, but their idea is that they're going to be spending that money somewhere else through other law enforcement sources and things like that. And so, they choose to spend the money upfront. And then, I'll just leave you with one last one. Adapting to Main Street for Changing Retail Landscape, and that's looking at some old parts of cities. One was Ranch Cordova. That was, was a topic. But looking at old Main Streets and really revitalizing them through things like we're doing in terms of commercial development and, and some fee waivers and, and things like that. So, they really hit on, it has to be, what, what the experience of these cities were, was that when you couple retail with housing, it really seems to bring people in the retail to support and revitalize those areas. So, I will stop there, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them about some of the other things, the other conference breakout sessions that I attended. Any questions?
Oh, I'm curious, you know, how you're, you're, how you were educated on cannabis, but I don't want to delve into that topic for obvious reasons. I'm glad you went. I'm looking forward to what you can add to the future conversations, that's for sure.
Yeah, it was definitely an interesting, you know, conversation in the, in the meeting about what cities that, that started dispensaries and, not just dispensaries, but the whole commercial cannabis businesses in their communities, the whole Coachella Valley. I think there's nine cities there. Five of them have some sort of dispensary operation, and it works for them. I think the, the main thing that I took away from that meeting was really look at how much it's, how much the city taxes, because that really drives whether the business can be successful. The other piece is that, and it made the state people a little uncomfortable that we're on the panel, but the state taxing of it doesn't go down at all, ever. And so, it's really borne by the cities to make sure that it works. So, that was, it was, it was an interesting time.
Same as it ever was, apparently.
Yes.
With taxes.
Yeah. So, I'll go on to, if there's no other questions, I'll go on to the SAICOG. We attended the board meeting on the 21st, had a great presentation from the Wilton Rancheria Tribe Chair, Jesus Tarongo. He's really looking to partner regionally, but also with individual, individual governments, agencies to help others learn about Native American life and culture. And, and they're really moving forward after they have opened up their economic engine just north of us to really do some economic development up in that area. And so, it was interesting listening to a different perspective of the Native American culture. We also approved the Sacramento Regional Emergency Preparedness Strategy for the Six County Region. What this is, is just a stopgap. And they, and they worked with transit providers and agencies that provide transit, such as RT and school districts, and they also worked with San Joaquin Regional Transit District south of us to come up with a plan of how they could utilize some of those resources before evacuations are needed and then use them during evacuations. And so, it was pretty interesting how they all kind of molded that together. It doesn't take the place of any of the emergency response plans that are currently in the cities or, or the counties, but it's an additional item that is always left out or not thought about during an emergency by the general public. And so, what they're hoping is that this would bring that to, to the, to the public. So, also, the Youth Leadership Academy is gearing up. There's going to be 40 openings through SAICOG Youth Leadership Academy. Youth ages through grades nine through 12 can participate in it. And again, it's Six County Region Leadership Academy, where the students learn about government leadership. And I think they've had over 200 people go through the program so far. So, I'm looking forward to having somebody from Galt on that. And what I'll do is I'll, when the toolkit's sent out, I'll send it out to the city clerk so she can pass it through and get it on to our newsletter as well as social media. And then also, I'll send it out to our, my colleagues that are on the CAST Committee so that they can pass it on to the school districts through that. And then, that is it. That's all I have. And I have a Land Use and Natural Resources Policy Committee meeting on the 27th.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir. I attended the Galt Youth Commission here this eve, yesterday evening. Everybody was sharp and on point. They mapped out how their year is going to go as far as committees and subcommittees for different events. They were quite enthused and I would say much more organized this year. So, it's, it's good to see. I also attended the Homeless Policy Council, Sacramento Homeless Policy Council. There's a lot of discussion about statistics and several presentations on like 2-on-1 and 3-on-1, which helps with housing and, and people and homeless. And the, some, there was even suggestion about universal income, which I would be pretty sketchy on, but without going into boring stats of stuff I basically didn't write down because it was way too much, there's, homeless is actually way up. It was down for a while and, and it shot up by a fair sum from 7,000 to 9,000, and then it came back down another thousand or so, but it's, it's quite concerning. There's a, for the people that can, that are on the edges of homelessness or not, there's really a lack of affordable housing. And that's a huge problem just of our, because of our economy. Even a new coworker I have, he says like, it's impossible. He makes a good living, and it's impossible for him to buy a home right now. So, I'll, I'll stop right there. Next is E1, League of California Cities 2023 Annual Conference and Expo, but it's by Mr. Hines. So, you covered it. Okay, excellent. Information and Consent Calendar. It is, is there any public comment on information and consent calendar?
No public comment.
Thank you. It is recommended that items 1 through 7 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by the city council members. Do anybody on the city council have a request to pull or discuss an item?
My mic's off. Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions on items F4, 5, and 7.
We'll pull 4, 5, and 7?
Actually, sorry.
That's okay.
4, 5, 6, and 7. Sorry.
4, 5, 6, and 7. So, with that, do I have a motion, or I would be looking for a motion to receive file warrants for a period ending September 20, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting for September 19, 2023, and the Treasury's report for a period ending August 2023. So moved by the mayor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Next, we will discuss-
Next, we will discuss subject Golden Heights Reservoir Recoding Project, CHIP 519C, construction contract award, sequo exempt. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, first, I apologize, Mike, just late in looking over all this and threw my notes together, but some of these questions I would prefer to ask in public anyways. Staff report's pretty thorough, I just had a couple of questions. The Golden Heights, which location is that?
So that's over, I forget the name of the park, but it's on the northeast side, over off of, I think it's Lake Canyon.
Lake Canyon Park.
Yeah, Lake Canyon Park.
Is that one of the, is that one of the main ones that we use?
Yes, that's one of our two primary wells.
I thought so, okay. And thank you, John, for coming up, because maybe you can help me out. So those were the start, I'm just trying to understand. So you're talking about taking it offline through the winter in the low use time to do the construction. So my question is, you're asking for 15% contingency for unforeseen costs, once the tank is drained, anything that may come up. Typically, 10% is the standard, right? Okay, so my question relating to that is, I get that, you know, drain the water, you don't really know what you're dealing with, but you guys did have a dive study done. They inspected it, and then you had, based on that study, I'm assuming you had the Bay Area coding consultants prepare the necessary things that were going to be done, that was then given to the bidders, so on and so forth, they bid according to that. So I'm just wondering, like, what, I mean, I understand unforeseen things, but I just don't see unforeseen by the tune of 100 grand. You're asking for 150 grand extra, I'm just, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll let John jump in, I'll take the first crack at it, but essentially, you know, in a project like this, yeah, even though we had a dive study done, it was done in 2021, so it's, you know, going on a couple of plus years old, and so we don't know how much might have changed in that amount of time, or if something was missed potentially or something like that. So once you drain that tank, then, you know, we'll be able to get in there and really see what's going on. I mean, a dive is, you know, obviously very accurate for the most part, but, you know, again, you've got somebody in a dark tank, you know, with limited lighting, you know, kind of swimming around trying to, you know, observe all the, you know, the surface areas of the tank. So with that, John, I don't know if there's anything more you want to add?
And there's a lot of structural elements that go in supporting the roof of the tank that are also very hard to see, and that's where a lot of the corrosion occurs. And as Mike said, the dive was, the inspection was a couple of years old, so we anticipate that it's going to be even worse than it was in the video from a couple of years ago. And again, with timing too, we've got a very narrow window when we take that tank offline and have it back online. It just helps us keep things moving as quickly as possible.
So then, this might be a stupid question, but I ask it nonetheless. Other than watching this meeting and seeing what we approve, I mean, contractors are made aware of what our contingencies are, are they not? I mean, we go to and say, hey, we approved it, there's a 10 or 15 or whatever percent contingent, whatever. How often is it that these contingencies are gone into? Is it very common, or just generally speaking, in public works projects?
Yeah, it can vary dramatically, you know, from project to project. Most projects, I would say, you know, we have a pretty good sense, you know, through the consultant's design and us reviewing it, or even a, you know, a second, third-party consultant reviewing it as to, you know, what the likely cost estimate is going to be. But, you know, market conditions can change and fluctuate, and then you also, there's many factors. I mean, what is the pool of contractors that are available to do this kind of work, kind of thing, particularly, you know, in our area, as to what is the level of competition, if you will? So yes, while they know our numbers, it's all public record. I would tell you, my sense from doing this for 30 years is, honestly, I don't think they pay a whole lot of attention, most of them. I mean, they know their business too, and they know what it costs to do things. They will certainly look at an engineer's estimate, but engineer's estimates tend to be, you know, we'd like to think when we estimate stuff, we want to be in the middle of the pack. We don't want to be the low bidder, we don't want to be the high bidder, kind of thing. So they know that they're probably going to have to sharpen their pencil, you know, to be somewhat under the engineer's estimate typically, if they want to be successful in securing, you know, a bid, so. I don't know if John wants to add anything?
Along with that too, this project being so specialized, this is not an area of expertise that city staff has. So we've already got our inspection consultant onboard, and they will be our eyes and ears with the goal of staying definitely below, you know, obviously our goal is to have no change orders. I've never had a project that is my career goal, that I have a project that is completed ahead of schedule and below budget and no change orders.
Never had?
Never happened. It's my goal.
I would have been shocked if you said that.
I've got about 10 years left, I've got about another 10 to 15 years, so that's my goal.
Maybe I'm balancing them out, because I can say I've had a good number, so.
So it says the 637,000 is to be used from the Water Fund 05, and then the rest is coming from, and I couldn't really understand, where is the rest coming from? Which fund? General Fund? Or from public?
It's all from Water Fund.
This is all from the Water Fund.
All from the Water Fund, okay. I don't know why it said 637 from Fund 05, and then it?
That's the additional appropriation to fully fund the project.
Okay.
Yeah, there's currently the 618 number, that's what's currently in there, plus the 44, and then what we need to fully fund this is the 637.
Well, I am glad to see that we had three bidders, and that the low bid was roughly, what, $550,000 less than the high bid? That's a huge difference. So anyways, thank you for clarifying those questions, that's really all I had. Just wanted to kind of better understand this, and I apologize for not asking some of this in advance, but thank you, John, thank you, Mike. That's all I had, Mayor.
We're here to answer questions whenever they come, so.
So with that, I'd be looking for a motion to move to Golden Heights Reservoir Recoding Project, CHIP 519C, construction contract award, sequo exempt, 15301C. So moved by the mayor, second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Farmer, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next would be subject approval of participation in California Federal Surplus Property Program. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, so I don't know who's best to answer this, because, okay. Are we currently enrolled in this? I mean, it says to enroll in it, but is this to re-enroll?
Correct, it is a re-enrollment. The city has participated since 2016.
So with that being in 2016, I mean, it sounds like a great program. Obviously, there's, I don't know why anybody would be against, you know, the chance to buy surplus equipment at your, but my question really is the utilization of our participation in that program. I mean, I don't know, I can't remember any time we've ever, I mean, this is a great program, we should be using it more if we can buy. I don't remember ever saying, hey, we want to get approval to go buy this used piece of equipment from this auction, so can you remember?
I can confirm that sadly, Councilmember Farmer, because I asked that same question in anticipation. The city has not utilized the program to date, is my understanding and checking with staff, so. But you make a good point, I think it's certainly an opportunity for us. Although I would point out that particularly the telehandler we did buy used a couple of, two, three years ago, I want to say. Not through this program, but we obviously seek to, you know, purchase, you know, good-conditioned used equipment when we can. So this definitely affords us an opportunity to do that, so.
Well, I would definitely, I mean, obviously I support the re-enrollment. I just would just like to, the caveat that I'd like to see us use it, you know, in the future, I'd love to see that, you know, anytime we can save taxpayer money a little bit, when it's, as long as it's not, you know, penny wise, pen foolish, of course. So that's all I had, thank you, Mike, for answering that.
No.
Thank you, sir, any other questions by the council? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve the participation in California Federal Surplus Property Program. Moved by the Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by the mayor, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next would be Officer Greewall Memorial Agreement, Romo Studios LLC, Mr. Farmer?
Yes, and I think, Chief, you can probably answer these questions, I would assume. I just, I was trying to understand, so in the language it says, let me see my notes here. It says that you guys fundraised, it says in here, it says 59,000 has been raised through fundraising, but then it says general fund appropriation of 59,000, and I know that we appropriated some from ARPA, so I was confused on the 50,000 versus the 59, and which was coming from where. So I'm just trying to clarify, the language seemed muddy to me. It says right, let's see, if I can find the sentence.
Yeah, the resolution has a typo, I believe you approved up to 60,000 of ARPA funding, which will come through the general fund, and so that's the allocation. And because the quote is slightly under that 110,000, that's why it's slightly under the 60,000, so it's 59505.
Okay, so you guys are asking, out of the 60,000 we earmarked up to, you guys are asking for 59505 of that, is that correct?
Correct, and I'd just ask that we amend the resolution to reflect that. You previously appropriated 60,000 of ARPA, up to 60,000 of ARPA funding, not 50. That's how the resolution should reflect.
Yeah, that's where I was confused. Okay, and then my only, let's see. So you've gotten the quote for it already. It said that conceptual drawings are not presented yet, but I mean, you probably said we're looking for something, and they said, I'm just trying to figure out how they came up with the cost if no drawing?
So actually, we do have a drawing, but not one we're sharing publicly, because it needs a lot of work, and so it was a computer draft from the artist. He's in a project with the Fire Memorial currently that has a deadline on October 13th. So we got something before the family, and Vice Mayor Sandu has been the liaison for the family and participated in that meeting. And so we've provided that to the family and the scope of the work that's going to be done. We have a formal meeting scheduled on Monday, October 23rd, assuming this passes with the artist to, in earnest, start the project.
Okay, I did go and check out their social media to see, looks like their sculpting is their forte, you know. The guy was like in Italy recently, and so I was looking at some of their work, just curious. So two additional questions. I know it says that the location at the PD, I know it's going to be the police department somewhere, it's still to be determined. But, which, I mean, so I'm assuming that maintenance of this statue, whatever maintenance should be, it's bronze or whatever, would be on the PD, I just want to make sure that the PD are going to have maintenance budgeted?
Yeah, so, and the hope is, or the goal is to have a memorial fund in perpetuity through fundraising that we do that supports the existing Ton Memorial here at City Hall and the memorial for Harmon de Graywall at the Police Department. And so that those efforts streamline through that 501(c)(3). So we have an informal memorial committee that works inside the department that includes staff and members of the POA. But the vision is an annual fundraising project that allows us to do work and maintain those, and then other related, perhaps donations and other things to other organizations who suffer the same tragedy.
Okay.
But that's, the PD will handle that, and that'll be outside the budgeting process, because we'll make that work.
Okay, then my last one is not really a question, it's just a comment of note. I was reading through the contract with the artist, and on page 11 of 17, paragraph 7, it says the artist is the sole and complete owner of all images drawn, sculpted, printed, or in any other display of said Officer Graywall bronze bust memorial. Any monetary gain from the sale of said images drawn, sculpted, printed, or in any other display must have approval of the artist. I mean, assuming that's just, you know, I mean, most artists are going to be given.
Some sort of commission or something?
The, well, the, no, I mean, the intellectual, yeah, intellectual property, whatever. But I would just think this might be something you might want to get approval in advance, because I'm just reading this, and I'm thinking, you guys, you know, if you ever make up t-shirts and it has a picture of the memorial, whatever, you have to go back to this guy. You don't want to have him have some leverage where you have to get his approval every time, or he's going to want some kind of whatever. I would lock down that in advance, saying that if you guys, once he's done and he's paid, if you guys are going to show that image on any propaganda or anything that you guys use with the police department or anything, that you have a right to do that in advance. That would be smart to do that, so that he doesn't come back at you. Not that he would, I'm just saying.
So we will work on that in our initial meeting.
So that's it, thank you for answering those questions, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, any other questions by the council? Seeing none, I would look to approve the Officer Greewall Memorial Amendment with Romo Studios LLC. So moved by the mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Farmer, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next is Office of Traffic Safety Grant Award Acceptance, Mr. Farmer?
All right, yeah, I appreciate you guys' patience with this.
It's all good, that was really good on the.
F7, so I just had a question. So if I'm understanding this correctly, going from the triplicate type of ticketing to a digital type, obviously great, you know, moving forward technology. So the other question was, the initial, you're using the grant money 51,000 to purchase the software and all the stuff. I don't have the report up, but there's software and a whole bunch of things. But I know with all that comes like software updates and this and that, whatever. So my question is, and you don't have to provide it today, but maybe you could just, something in the future, provide counsel. I was going to reach out to you in advance to ask for this, but I got busy today. But I would like to know what the ongoing, if there's any ongoing maintenance involved in the system, and if, what that would be, just, because I'm sure there's something, right? Yearly to maintain said system, whether it's software or, I don't know. So I was just curious what that ongoing would be outside of the, because the grant's great, but then, you know, then the maintenance is going to have to come out of your budget, right?
Right, so we don't, I mean, and so all equipment has a shelf life, right? So this will get us started and get us on the same platform as most agencies in this endeavor for having the equipment that swipes the driver's license, is able to input the violations for the driver in this case, and print electronically that citation in the field. So it's a cleaner copy, and it's easier for the courts to read. If there are additional unknown expenses, those would come out of our IT budget, and we do have, you know, sort of maintenance and upkeep that's in our IT budget. But a lot like, for example, our in-car computers, those have about a five-year shelf life, and we know we already have to replace those. I see this grant as giving us that flexibility to launch this program. And then in the years, as they start to fail, we'll be looking through either OTS, Office of Traffic Safety, or other avenues for truing up this equipment. So that's a long way of saying I don't expect significant impacts. But I will have staff look back, go back and look to find out what our warranty period is and to make sure that we have adequate coverage.
So this is basically, have the ability to print the tickets instead of a handwritten ticket, like if you give somebody a ticket for a headlight out or something. It prints it through the computer, through the car computer, and they're given a print. I think that's great.
Yeah, no, and it's.
I've seen some tickets where the, you're like, the handwriting, maybe the officers.
And I'm guilty of that too. Right, yeah, you can't even read, yes. So handwriting is very important in those, but what this does is allow, it streamlines the code sections, and it saves a lot of back and forth on the citations, it provides better clarity and uniformity in those citations, because they all look the same and feel the same. So yeah, there won't be the triplicate forms for the traffic citations, there still will be on criminal citations.
Okay, well, thank you for the information and answer my questions. I don't have any more on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'd be looking to a motion to approve the Office of Traffic Safety Grant Awards Acceptance. Some of grants moved by Councilman Farmer, seconded by the mayor, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Next is scheduled matter of public hearing, which there is none. Next is a regular calendar, so City Council Office, subject Beautification Committee Appointment, H1.
So Vice Mayor Sandu is to appoint a community member to the Beautification Committee to fill a vacant position with a term ending December 2026. The city clerk's office posted the vacancy on social media and on the city's website. One application was received from Darlene Brown, who meets the required qualifications, and the vacancy was due to the city council reorganization back in November of 2022.
Thank you, Tina. I'm happy to appoint her as a beautification member, and she already doing the good job. She was on that committee before, and she can do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we need a public comment, or is required?
There's no public comment.
That takes care of that, thank you. Next is Public Works Department, subject Elm Avenue Brick Wall Replacement Project, addition to capital improvement program and associated actions. Mr. Sellings?
Thank you, Mayor. Give me a second here, move some things around. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This presentation is for the council's consideration to include. this presentation is for the council's consideration to include this potential project, the Elm Avenue Brick Wall Replacement, in the city's capital improvement program, along with related actions. And before I get into this, I want to note that despite the name, uh, this potential project includes actually two different walls, uh, although they're located in close proximity, which you'll see on the next slide here on the map. So, as you can see on this map, there's a couple of lines, um, and this is, uh, Elm Avenue, uh, just west of the railroad tracks for a rough, uh, location, and, uh, the Elm Avenue Brick Wall is shown here, the red line, uh, and located between Emerald Vista Drive and Robin Lane, and that's in the west-central area of the city. Uh, the white line, as you can see, a little bit further to the left, that's at the Quail Hollow Well Site, uh, and that is a precast masonry wall, uh, and, and again, at the southeast corner of Elm Avenue and Grouse Drive. So for some background, uh, the brick wall along Elm Avenue was constructed as part of the Tealwood Residential Subdivision Development back in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, given the construction being in nineteen eighty-nine, it predates the formation of any of the lighting and landscape districts that the city has, or community facilities districts. Uh, thus there is no funding for ongoing maintenance of the wall. Relatedly, on the Quail Hollow Site, uh, that was also developed about the same time, the, uh, late eighties, eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, uh, though it hasn't been operational, it's not one of our wells that we use, uh, currently, uh, for some years now. It's essentially a backup well if we ever do need it, uh, so we, we keep it around for that purpose if needed, but we are not drawing water from this site, so. Uh, while the street-facing sides at the well site have a perimeter chain link fence with some landscape screening, uh, on those two sides, the two sides along the back, which front adjacent homes, uh, have this precast masonry wall. Uh, during the storms back in January, uh, you may recall with the high winds and all the trees and everything, we lost, uh, this was another, uh, you know, damaged area, uh, a portion of the wall, uh, collapsed and, and crumbled, uh, basically the, the wall portion that would be on the, if I get my directions right, the east side. And you'll see some pictures of that here in a minute. So, with regard to the existing conditions, uh, staff have inspected both walls, and I want to note the following. Uh, for the Elm Avenue, uh, location, uh, there's about nine hundred and fifty feet of wall out there, and there's a lot of, uh, what I would characterize as moderate cracking, uh, loose or missing mortar, uh, throughout the length of that, uh, wall. Several pilasters and, uh, you know, just, I guess, for clarity, a pilaster is essentially a pillar. That's the official term, if you will. So those pillars that are spaced out, you know, probably, uh, I think they're around fifteen-foot spacing or something, uh, those are pilasters. Uh, two of them have fallen, one, about half of it, which you'll see in the pictures, and the other one, uh, fully fell on, on the street side. Um, and then, um, you know, a, after looking at this, and we got, I think, uh, a, uh, request through GALL Connect about two months ago, and, uh, started looking at this in earnest, there had been some previous repairs done a few years ago. Uh, but anyway, uh, in looking at this, after, after that request, we had called out a few masonry contractors, uh, actually had trouble getting anybody to respond much to us. I talked to one on the phone, he wouldn't even come out after he looked at the pictures, uh, and he said, you know, there, it's basically past the point of, of repair. Uh, he recommended a replacement. And so did the two, uh, contractors that actually came out and looked at it in person. So, um, you know, with its age and everything and condition, uh, it would be difficult, if not impossible, essentially, to match the materials that are there, so. On the Quail Hollow Well Site, uh, similar, you know, situation, uh, this, uh, and this is a different type of wall, I should say. The, the one on, uh, on Elm Avenue is, uh, a brick masonry wall. Uh, the one at the well site is what we call a precast concrete wall. And essentially, to explain what that difference is, bricks, as you can imagine, they're just stacked essentially on top of each other, whereas a precast wall, they'll basically put in the pillars or the pilasters, and then the, uh, wa, actual flat-faced wall sections are precast, meaning they're preformed at a, uh, you know, at a, at a concrete, uh, cement, uh, masonry plant, and then they're slotted, if you will, down the pilasters, and oftentimes mortared just to cover the joints between the pieces of the wall, so. Um, so that's what the precast is. But again, at Quail Hollow, um, that's what we've got. Looking at that wall, and you'll see in some pictures, hopefully, uh, the detail is kind of hard to see a little bit, but, uh, cracked throughout, not just horizontally, vertically. Um, the, this tends to be a lower-grade type of, uh, concrete that they use for these things, so. Um, and again, you know, with its age, uh, and condition, uh, it would be essentially, you know, impossible to match it, so. So, getting into some of the pictures here and looking at the Elm Avenue ones, uh, you know, basically, I'll start from left to right. That first, uh, left-most one, uh, you can see the partial collapse of that pilaster. Uh, and then, um, the next one, uh, you can see, this is a condition that's, uh, that's present on many of the pilasters, where it's starting to separate from the wall, and so, I don't know if, where are the, um, I think this is, I don't know if this will show up, maybe it will. So, I don't know if you can see that, that, uh, pointer dot that I'm using, but right in there, there's a gap, and it ranges from, you know, a fraction of an inch up to maybe a half inch or more, um, where it's separating from the wall. And so those are, you know, apt to, to fall down at some point, similar to what you see here. The next slide over, you can see this is where the full, uh, pilaster collapse occurred, and I think if you look further down the wall, just a couple down, is where that partial one is there, furthest on the left. Um, you know, this presentation, uh, this, I think I got the wrong, uh, picture in here. You can see some cracking certainly in the mortar joint there, but the one that I had intended to show, it, uh, it shows a lot more extensive cracking, as well as, um, missing, uh, mortar in the joints, um, so. Uh, so that's the, uh, the deficiencies that are present in the Elm Avenue Brick Wall. Um, there's some other deficiencies that I, I didn't, uh, include pictures of, but where plantings, trees primarily, have, uh, you know, root problems, root invasion is essentially, uh, disrupting and, and compromising the integrity of the wall. So there are some bricks that are literally pushed out, if you will, um, and deflecting, so. So for the Quail Hollow Well Site, and, uh, some more pictures here, you can see by the, uh, the wood bracing on, again, I'll go left to right. Uh, you can't, it looks like it's hard to see. There we go. Uh, you can see the bracing that, uh, that staff have put up there to, to brace the wall. What you don't see behind that plywood is this essentially a big piece of the wall that's missing, so. Um, and then, uh, looking over, it's kind of hard to see in this photo with that sun angle and the, and the shadow there, but in that shadow, it's, uh, there's basically nothing left in there, and you can see some of the exposed rebar, um, that's, uh, part of the, uh, support for, for the wall there. Uh, the third slide, just kind of looking over again, uh, but it shows extensive horizontal cracking, uh, in the precast panels that are between the, the pillars or the pilasters. And then the last slide on the upper left up here, uh, again, more of the same horizontal cracking, but also large vertical cracks, and, and I don't know if you can kind of see it right there, right at the pilaster. Uh, there's, uh, and this is probably like a half-inch-plus wide crack, so it's a, it's a very large crack, so, uh, as things go. So as far as what's proposed for the improvements on this project, um, for the Elm Avenue wall, the first thing would be to demolish it and remove it, remove that material, uh, though we anticipate, uh, being able to largely utilize the existing foundation that's at the bottom of the wall at grade level, um, for the new wall. Um, there may need to be some foundation repairs. Obviously, we won't know until we remove the existing wall to see, you know, what kind of condition that foundation's in, but it appears to be, uh, by most, uh, observations, that it's in pretty good shape, so. Um, you know, I also want to note, uh, those trees, uh, landscaping, we're probably gonna have to remove some of that stuff in order to construct a new wall, uh, in there. Uh, and then after that, as far as the replacement goes, uh, there's a couple of options here, is we can put back a similar type of brick wall, uh, that was there, or, uh, a masonry wall. It doesn't necessarily have to be brick. Um, I want to touch back on, I had Craig look in the original conditions of approval for the Tealwood Development, and it did specify a masonry wall, though it didn't specify the design or the type of wall, but it did specify masonry. So, in that, we can't just replace it with, say, a wood fence or something like that, so. It does have to be a masonry wall. But, again, uh, as you've seen in some of the pictures, there's really two types of masonry walls. There's the, you know, block or brick type, um, typical traditional, uh, masonry construction, and then there's the precast, uh, type, so where you can see the panels that slot down between, uh, the pilasters. So those are a couple of options that we can look at, uh, on this, and then, uh, Quail Hollow, uh, similar thing, be essentially the same. We'd probably do the precast there, uh, take out the existing wall, replace it, uh, and that's, I think there's around a hundred and sixty feet or so of wall there, about eighty feet on each side roughly, so. Um, but that would probably be the precast, uh, pillar and panel option. And I wanted to include a couple of pictures, just to give you some ideas here. Uh, the images on the left, uh, these are the, the, oop, wrong button here, sorry. So, these are the, uh, precast panel and pilaster type, what we have at the well site, uh, but I, I included these because they're a similar brick appearance to what's, what's a Quail Hol, or I mean, uh, along Elm Avenue now. So there's a couple of different, uh, brick type options, and then, uh, looking over, this, uh, this next one over, this is actually right over at the recently constructed Catarina Estates. Um, that's a traditional masonry construction wall, uh, block wall. And then, uh, the furthest to the right here, this is also a very recent wall, and this is, again, like these other two, a, uh, pillar and panel, precast wall, and this is, uh, at the, uh, the storage, uh, development. It's just, uh, over there on industrial, um, so, uh, and I know it's kind of hard to see in here, but, uh, that, we did watch them put those in. These are panels, and they've just mortared the joints, so, uh, it blends in fairly well. So anyway, just, uh, some options there, uh, on, uh, you know, types of, or appearances, if you will, uh, of walls, so. So with that, um, you know, just covering the recommendation, uh, staff recommends approving the addition of the Elm Avenue Brick Wall Replacement Project in the twenty-three, twenty-four Capital Improvement Program, with a construction budget of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and four hundred and fifty thousand of that, uh, funding would come from Fund One, and that would be for the Elm Avenue wall, and then eighty thousand, uh, of that total would come from Fund Five, and that would be for the Quail Hollow, uh, Well Site. And then authorize an appropriation of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Fund One, authorize an appropriation of eighty thousand dollars from Fund Five, and then authorize the Public Works Department to prepare construction documents for the project. Uh, with that, uh, thank you very much, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Mike?
Yes.
Which, so if you already have a price, which, we talked about a lot of different options. I mean, there's clearly, I have a friend who's a mason guy, and we've had these discussions at barbecues and things about the cost difference can be huge between, like the prefab type thing, or actually out there mortaring, whatever. So you said we have options, but the price that you've, you're asking for, which option does that pay for?
Yeah, so basically, uh, as we tend to do, uh, in public works and engineering in general, is to, you know, essentially, come up with an estimate for, I won't say worst-case scenario, but a, you know, a, uh, that has a, uh, a healthy budget, uh, shall we say. Uh, so that said, uh, we budgeted at the, um, the precast panel and, and pillar for the Quail Hollow Site, and we budgeted for the, um, uh, traditional masonry construction for the Elm Avenue site. Uh, so I think that we can, uh, certainly, uh, go with the precast panel and pillar type at Elm Avenue as well, uh, you know, at the council's discretion and direction, uh, if, if the council so chooses. So, again, that, that budget is based on a traditional, uh, construction for Elm Avenue and a, uh, replacing kind precast panel and pillar at the, uh, Quail Hollow.
So for the wall, it's a precast, and for the well site, it's traditional mason block?
Vice versa.
Oh, vice versa?
Yeah. The well site has the precast, and the Elm Avenue has their traditional masonry construction.
Okay. Um, so, one concern, so when I saw this, because I live, I used to live in that, in the neighborhood, um, not far from where Tina lives, and so I'd drive that way all the time, and I would, I'd walk or go for a run or whatever, right along that wall. So I did go back over there and I was took a look at it, because it was in the staff report, and I see the two pillars that are, you know, and there's one neighbor that's got like a piece of wood up, and so, so that parts look really bad. I mean, the majority of the wall, I mean, I didn't get out of the car and go up and look for cracks in the mortar, but, I mean, the majority of the wall doesn't look that bad, just those one spots look really bad. But the one thing that popped out of me, the concern with, is that that wall's been there a long time, and I bet you that a lot of those houses there have very, um, what's the word? Their landscaping and trees and stuff are very much gonna be a part of that wall. And so my concern is, with the amount of mature trees that might have to be removed, or landscaping that people are gonna have to alter and dramatically affect their backyards, my concern with proving this tonight is that I doubt that anybody there even knows we're talking about this. I know there's only like twelve properties, I think, but I would like to see those properties being noticed first as owners and saying if they would come forward, and we push this to, I, I know we need to get it fixed, and I know winter's coming, but I just, I really would hate to be, I would not want to be one of those neighbors and find out that wall was approved to be demolished, demolished and repaired, and me not have no opportunity for, because, I, I mean, just looking at those backyards, I think that's gonna be an issue. Um, I would like to have them to know about it ahead of time, or at least have them have a chance to come and say something or, or whatever. So that's, that's really my hang-up tonight, where that is just that we didn't do outreach ahead of time, um, knowing that that was gonna be, you know, in the agenda, because people aren't reading, they're not, most people are not looking at the City Council Agenda Report, seeing if there's something affect their neighborhood. So with that, I think I have another question, but I'm gonna let it go to see if we have any public comment, or if any of my fellow...
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Let's, uh, have a public comment, then.
Is there any public comment for this item?
We have two public comments. Ken Lee?
Hello, my name is Ken Lee. I wanted to know, what would be the cost to dispose of the bricks? They look like nice bricks, and maybe you can give them to neighbors in the back so they can build panther boxes in the house, and that would kind of please them, or use those bricks to, in the community garden, or sell it to a recycling company that buys used materials and have them haul it away. Because they look like nice bricks, and that way you can cut down on dumping them and reuse them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Brosman?
Sean, you actually beat me to the punch on one of them, which was the backyards that are being affected. Um, one of my concerns is if you came to me and you asked me to take one of my trees down in the backyard, I'd probably have an, uh, argument with you. Um, the other side is, is, yeah, I understand roots are gonna do some damage, um, and they probably do need to be trimmed, but I don't know what the city's power is as far as that goes. Um, and, uh, to me, getting the landowners approval that are gonna be affected would be, in my mind, very good idea. The other thing that I look at, and I'm not a mason, but after we had our problem with the yard and the barn over there that needs immediately to be torn down because of lack of maintenance, I would look at this wall and I go, what maintenance do we have on walls? Concrete, bricks, some of us own brick buildings, they do require some maintenance. I wonder what proactive steps we're taking instead of having to buy always, after thirty years, a wall, why we're not doing preventive maintenance steps, avoid having to buy the wall. When you see a split in concrete, pretty much everyone knows you need to fill that hole, or there's gonna be problems coming from it. But those holes, they've been there for years, and to me, you're guardians of the city's property. Well, how are we doing guarding it? We look at these walls, not very well. We look at the, uh, barn over at the, uh, work yard, not very well on that. We allowed the water to get in there and rot the beams. Not, that barn would have lasted two hundred years, hundred and fifty years, but, uh, I would just like to suggest that the city really go at more, uh, preventive maintenance, instead of reacting to it once it's really damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Me personally, uh, this is my...
Me personally, this is my least favorite style of wall. Everywhere I travel, I notice that these walls are a very common failure. You see them leaning often, especially if you, if you ever go to Pacific Avenue, to Stockton, on the way, there's a long stretch of this style of wall that is, I can't believe they leave it that long, but thank you for addressing it. So my concern is, just as we were talking, I was like, is it possible, I guess I'll back up a little bit, because you looked at the original construction, the city is required by law to stay within those standards, not necessarily above or below, correct?
Correct.
So, that I, that I'm distasteful of. But does anything from the product of speed block that's made in Galt, is that applicable to this, or is it not a type of standard that would be used for a wall but for a building instead?
You know, Mayor, I'm not familiar with when you say speed block, it, it may be, you know, a particular type of, of block.
Yeah, I apologize. It just, as the discussion was going on, I was reminded of the Speed Block Company in Galt. So, so maybe just look into it. It's, it's generally used for, as far as I know, all they use it for is building construction. So it may not be applicable, but it is a, it's kind of a Lincoln, not Lincoln. No, it's more like Legos where it's, it's sectional. It's not one you put up, and it's not real small, you know, little pieces.
Right.
So it may be a good tweener, if I may use that word. So what's, what's the, of the designs presented, what is the most rugged? Because I, I agree that, you know, it's the people that have homes and everybody's going to put bushes and stuff up against the wall, those are always going to push. It's going to be very difficult to get people to do maintenance on, on a city wall. But, you know, so what's the, what can withstand that kind of aggression constantly over the years?
Yeah, that's a challenge, because I mean, there's all different types of plants and trees, and, and I can tell you, and Craig can tell you better than me, many cities have essentially eliminated a number of varieties of trees that they put in their own rights of way, you know, for landscaping and beautification, because they have what we call intrusive root, you know, type of growth. The liquid ambers are the ones that come to mind with the little spiky balls that everybody's familiar with, extremely invasive, you know, and, and they just tear up sidewalks like you can't believe. So things like that. Obviously, we don't have much say in what somebody plants in their backyard. And, and maybe just a quick clarification on this particular wall, yes, it does predate, you know, any sort of funding mechanism. And, but it is in the city right of way. And as the mayor points out on, in Stockton, and I actually made a call to a colleague, former colleague who works for the city of Stockton, and asked what they do. Well, they do not locate these walls in the city rights of way, so the city doesn't maintain them. Now, with everything, there's trade-offs, right? So the trade-off is, the city doesn't have the cost of maintaining them or rebuilding them. But, you know, as the mayor has attested, those walls are in just abysmal condition. I mean, they look hideous. And, you know, that's the trade-off, essentially, when you put it on the property owner. So you have to kind of pick your poison. So anyway, this is in the city right of way. The reason we haven't initially contacted any property owners at this point, because we're bringing it to council first and foremost, before we would even, you know, be presumptive enough to make contact with them. The second is that essentially, when you've got, you know, 12 different property owners, we'd want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to get different opinions as to what needs to go in, kind of thing. It's going to be more of a, you know, this is what the city is contracting out for to replace this. I would say that the panel and pillar, while also the probably more cost-effective solution, it would probably also be less of an impact to, you know, those landscapings in the backyards of those properties too. So, but that's something that we can explore, you know, potentially as we develop plans and specs, if the council, you know, gives a direction to include this in the CIP, so.
That's all the questions I have. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes. Oh.
Thank.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I thought somebody in the audience.
First of all, thank you, Mike. You know, that detailed report about the project, there is just a clarification. One thing on the report is mentioned because staff bring that attention due to some community complaint. Can you a little bit explain what kind of complaint, and how the staff work on the complaint, like in uniform complaint, or just when the complaint gets, then the staff have a more focus on that?
Yeah. So that came through the Galt Connect, is my recollection, about two months ago. Somebody had made a comment that another one of the pillars is, is at least partially, you know, collapsed onto the sidewalk out here, and, you know, asking the city to respond to that, repair whatever's needed, kind of thing. And so we have our, our street staff went out and took a look at it, and, you know, took some pictures and let engineering know. We looked at it, and between us, we contacted some contractors to try to get a sense of what it would take to repair this wall. Or, you know, is it repairable, kind of thing. So we were hopeful that it was repairable. However, unanimously, at least the three that, that we, you know, had contact with, basically said it's, it's past that point. So.
And did you wait up for any complaint regarding the same issue before six months ago, a year ago, on, on the staff?
No. When I asked staff, I said, has there been anything prior to this? And I think what they found was in 2021, I think there was a complaint then, and there were some patching, repair work that was done at that point. So that's what, what I'm aware of.
The other thing about the complaint, it may, I don't, I don't know what the specifics, so there may be complaint, the houses back there, or there may be complaint from the other city.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to go back and look to see if we have the information, a name, or if we can determine where the, you know, the, the Galt request came from, if it was from one of the property owners or not. I'm not sure. So.
And then when that complaint comes up, and as a staff, you guys make a decision what need to done on that wall as an economic bay, and first thing you guys done to repair that wall, because if we are repairing the wall, we are not that much interfering with the backside of houses.
Correct.
And then you, you mentioned something, you, how, how you, when you make a repair, how you approach to the contractor, and you said, the contractor, they don't respond. Did you know who contractor, and how we, how we kind of thing bed out there if we repair that wall?
So if I think I understood the question, I, I know the names of one of the contractors. I don't recall the other two. I'd have to go back and, and look. I remember Veramontes was one of them. I don't remember the other two off the top of my head. But, and I'm sorry, what was the other piece of your question?
My thing is, you know, if we, for example, if we repair that, then we are not interfering that much people is back there, city. So, so I'm, I'm talking about, your answer was, you tried to contact with the contract who will repair that wall, but it's not getting their response from the contractor. I just, I just want to know how many people approach you guys, and what their response is, is, is why they not responding to repair that?
So the, again, to my knowledge, there's only been two, one in 2021 and one just a couple of months ago, as far as getting, you know, concerns, you know, or requests to make repairs to the wall. As far as the contractors, what I heard, at least from the one that I talked to, that I can relate firsthand, they are not so interested in doing repairs. They are interested in building new walls, you know, whether it's along subdivisions or freeways, those kinds of things. I think that's, you know, the lower hanging fruit, if you will, for them, the easier money. And I can tell you, you know, we've had a couple of existing walls, one over on Cost, and one over on, I think it was Maria, two recently, and, and there was one sometime back, the council may recall, where a vehicle impacted one of the masonry walls out off of Marengo. And getting contractors to come and do those repairs is, is pulling teeth, I can tell you. They, they aren't interested in these small, you know, more intensive projects. So it's, we've, we've been fortunate to find one contractor for these last two that, you know, is fairly responsive. But I can tell you on the previous one on Marengo, it took us some months to even get somebody, you know, on board. So that's my speculation. And again, what I heard from the one contractor, it's just not worth their time for, I mean, I thought, gee, this is, you know, almost 1,000 feet of wall. I'm like, what do, what do you guys need, you know, to come out? So I was a bit surprised myself. So.
And there's the estimate on that project around $530,000, right?
So when, yeah, when we, when we requested, you know, budget type estimates from them to do a traditional, you know, assuming the foundation's in good shape, to do a traditional masonry type of construction, I, I want to say it was in the $250, $280 a foot range. And for the panel and pillar, I think it was roughly $100 less a foot. So.
And then these, you guys contacted with the couple contractor, right?
Yeah.
And I, I believe, I don't see on the report, they did give us a bed, or they just?
No, we are not even at that point yet, Vice Mayor. We are simply, we just asked them for some budget level numbers, so that we could come to council, make you aware of this potential project, and see if we could get it in the CIP, to then move forward, develop some detailed, you know, plans and specifications, do that outreach like was touched on too with the property owners, and, you know, and move forward with the project. But, you know, we're not even at that, at that point yet. So.
And then my last question is, when, as, as a staff, we consider this is complaint, is a reasonable complaint, and then you send a staff out there. Did the staff look at the outside, or they also look at the inside too? Because that's, until they don't look at the backside of the wall, then we can really look more what kind of problem is your experience, can be all these trees, and what kind of impact on, on the back house? Did they do that review or not?
No, there was no review on the, you know, the private property side of the wall. And again, simply, we're just not at that point. And, I mean, you know, honestly, without council approval, I don't even know if I have a project. So I don't necessarily want to go knocking on doors and, and, you know, potentially giving false hope to people like, oh, hey, we're going to replace that wall, you know. So, so we don't, we did not do any inspection on the private property side.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Parham?
Yeah. So I kind of, so if I'm understanding this correctly, I mean, although there's a dollar figure associated with this tonight, really what you're coming to council is to see if the council has a stomach for a project like this before you guys go through the bidding process. Because we don't know if it's going to be 530 years, it's going to be 630 years, it's going to be 430. I mean, we don't really know, right? We haven't decided what kind of wall we want, for what kind of money we can get. I, I want to, I want to stress the importance of, I, it's very common for people to do these like raised planters against brick walls. And I can see, like, if you demo that wall, there's going to be like these dirt, like up, built up. I mean, God knows what people have done. That wall's very old. I do share some of the Vice Mayor's concerns about the repair. I know that, I, I believe you that these people are like, yeah, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to touch something unless it's a major project. But maybe in the bidding process, we could include, you know, the option if someone wanted to come and look at the existing wall to do repairs, instead of a full replacement. I mean, I don't know if somebody would even bother because they're like, well, I can bid on the whole thing. But I think maybe smaller outfits would be. So I'm not against spending the money to replace it, because I mean, obviously, I, personally, I think that I would lean towards a repair. But I also know that, you know, I don't know. I think what I would be willing to support tonight is to say that I'm, I would support going out and getting prices to come back to council and seeing, what are we really looking at for cost? And allowing that time period, again, to notice the people that live there, so that they can come. So when those bids come back, they have ample opportunity to come, maybe a meeting between that meeting, and then that means that I know it'll probably take a couple of months to get bids. But they'll have ample opportunity to come and make public comment. Because the last thing I want to do is have bid in front of me in two months from now, and have some angry citizen that's going to lose all his beautiful landscaping that he's nurtured for years, and saying that he didn't have a chance to come comment about it. So, so I would like to see, I would be supportive tonight to get bids, to move forward the project, for maybe repair and replacement. And also, I would like to see the public noticed as soon as possible, so to give those people ample time. That's, that's what I would support tonight. I don't know how you can tweak the, the verbiage of that, but I think to approve a number is kind of pointless, right? I mean, that's just my opinion.
Councilman Lozano? Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I, I too would like to see public outreach, and I appreciate you putting that in the staff report regarding the outreach. But what would that look like, Mike?
So the outreach on a typical project like this, I mean, again, I'm just clarifying for the council's edification here, is that wall is clearly on city property, is not a shared wall with the private property owners. The other thing that I didn't mention is there's a 12-foot public utility easement on the other side of the wall, on the private property side of the wall. So when you have a PUE, you know, whoever has facilities in there can essentially, you know, and property owners, this is disclosed when they purchase the property and everything. We all know, you know, people don't pay attention to every last little thing. They get disclosed, you know, when they buy a house. But it is something to be aware of, is, you know, is that if need be, and obviously, we try to minimize any impact to their landscaping or whatever other improvements they've made. But, but that is the situation. So.
That was going to be my other question, is what the, the public utility easement is going back. But
Right.
I, I like the idea that we don't, I mean, we have it there. But our interest is really with the property owner and working with them on
Yes.
whatever's on that other side, right?
Yeah. So initially, as far as the public outreach goes, it would be initial letters to the property owners to contact us, and, you know, offering one-on-one meetings, so to speak, to go over with them what's going on, get them up to speed on the need to replace the wall, you know, what that might look like, kind of thing. So the only thing, like I say, is we have to be a little bit cautious, because, you know, I, we need to have consensus, if you will, on, on the, you know, what the, at least the aesthetics of the wall are going to be. So.
So that, so you would offer individual meetings? Would there be an opportunity maybe to do a, like, just a block meeting with?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we could offer that, yeah.
Show maybe some design?
Mm-hmm.
That's potential.
Right.
I'm sure they'd be happy to have that thing replaced, because I can't imagine that it's just affecting the outside of the wall, right? I mean, they may have some shrubbery on that wall.
Right.
But.
Yeah. My suspicion is they probably don't, don't see much of the wall if they have landscaping or other improvements that are, you know, potentially hiding it, so to speak.
And we'd do whatever we could to save whatever was on.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, no, it's not, you know, the cities are, you know, typically any contractor's intention to go, you know, just run roughshod, so to speak. So.
So my last question is this. What, what you're asking us tonight is to put it into the capital improvement program?
Correct.
That you can move forward with potential?
Developing the plans and specifications.
Yeah. How do you start it without knowing whether or not we're going to pay for it at some level?
Right. And so that's why I wanted to give you at least a budget level estimate of the scale of the project, you know, monetarily, what we're talking about here. Because if I didn't have a number, and you just approve a project, and I come back and, oh, wow, I didn't know it was going to be that much. So I want to give you all
Right.
a sense of, you know, the scale of this project. So, again, those are budget level estimates, you know. And, you know, if, if you're willing to approve the project, to put it in the capital improvement program, and if we're not going to assign, I'm going to look to the city attorney as far as, you know, do, can we go forward not assigning a value, but at least understanding how it's going to be paid, at least for staff time, to develop those plans and specifications, to do that outreach, those kinds of things. Then if we have that understanding, and then we can come back to you, once we're ready to advertise it. We'll have, you know, a detailed engineer's estimate at that point. We'll know exactly what we're going to impact potentially on each person's property or not, you know, the little things like that. Right now, and this is a number for building a wall. There's, you know, not really much of any money in here for, you know, replacing or, or, you know, improvements that the property owners may have on their side of the wall. So.
Mr. Splendario?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if that's the council's direction, that's the council's direction, the practical recommendation you could, I could offer is, you could go ahead with the outreach or noticing piece alone.
Mm-hmm.
Get that feedback, and then maybe revisit it before the CIP process is fully launched, if that's the direction the council's going, just because of staff time and costs and that kind of thing. So maybe make those into two steps.
Would it be clear, I'm not recommend, I don't want to stall the project. I mean, I think, is there a chance that some of these people, they're going to come back and go, well, I don't want the wall. and go, well, I don't want the wall replaced. I go, what? Yeah, there's a very good chance. I mean, I, I, I'm less interested if you come back and say, well, we had three people that are very mad, they don't want the wall replaced, we have two people that want it replaced, we have two other people that say they don't care. I mean, that could very well be the thing. We're still gonna make a decision whether we're gonna place the wall or not, I just want to make sure that they have ample opportunity and they forewell knowing in advance. I don't want to slow the project down with doing that. I would like, I would be supportive of going out to get bids, get, see so we can have the actual hard numbers, and in the meantime of that, start the public notification process. I think what would be important is maybe to include with the bidding process, when bidders come out to bid that, if there's a certain property, because you can see from the back, you're like, well, that guy's got, if there's a certain property that the bidder has concern about, then maybe the city can facilitate some kind of, where that, that contractor could look at the other side of that yard and see what's it gonna take, because the last thing you want is them to tear the wall down and go, oh, I didn't realize this guy had this, this, and this, and then the cost goes way up because they didn't get to see the backside. So maybe that would be a chance to, to, for you guys to come back and go, okay, here's the hard numbers, here's how much it's gonna be for this kind of wall, here's how much of this, and we had three people that were gonna have, that were gonna be heavily impacted by the wall because of trees, eight are not gonna be impacted, and then we get the full scope of, and, and everybody knew about it. That's what I would like to see when it comes back.
Yeah, and to that point, thank you for that reminder. Essentially, what we would do in, in a situation like this as part of the outreach, and whether it's a group block meeting kind of thing, or even one-on-ones, is for the contractor's side, we would do what's called a pre-construction meeting. And they would have access to those yards to look and see, so that way, you know, they can account for certain things. Or they'll ask us, you know, hey, it looks like, where do, you know, where do you guys see addressing this issue in the bid? You know, maybe we need to add an item or modify an item or something like that. So that way, we basically get on the same page, if you will, to minimize the contingencies that, that you were touching on earlier with the, the water tank project, so. But that's what that's for, is for unforeseen things. But anyway, the contractor would have access to look at what's back there and as to, you know, what to try to protect based on our outreach with the property owners and what they may not care about, so.
What's the liability, city's liability if under wall failure?
It's fully on our property, so.
Yeah, so now that we've had this public meeting discussing it, we can't say we didn't know about it. And so knowledge is one of the things that they're gonna look for, for potential issues. So, yeah, I mean, it's something you want to address sooner than later.
Yep.
Mr. Splendario, can we just do this with direction, or do we still have to pass a resolution? If we can come to a consensus about what we want to do?
You can give, you could basically give direction along the lines of what you already described, if that's, if that's the motion you're thinking. But there would have to be a resolution at some point if the money's actually gonna be used to pay for, pay for it. So the, the first item was the big item as far as getting money in the budget, doing the budget amendment, getting into the CIP so we can, so they can start that process. You'd have to hire a design professional, all that kind of stuff. So I'm assuming there's gotta be some kind of budget transfer or something after the fact, right, Matt? Yeah?
So it requires a resolution, and then, and then later amend that resolution to change the amount?
Yeah, I mean, you could adopt the resolution as is tonight, and then if you go forward the process, you could abandon the process if that was the thought, right? It's easier to probably just back out the money than to start the process at the city's risk, hire consultants, and then if we, if we don't go forward with it, figuring out where that money's coming from. Here, at least, it's accounted for whatever's spent. It would just require a budget amendment basically later.
I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what kind of motion I want to make. I just, I just support moving forward with getting bids and, and the public outreach, however you want to word that or phrase it, or however it has to be done to, to earmark money or whatever, you guys can figure out the, whatever, and then we'll vote on it, but that's.
Mr. Sellings, that, that's what Councilman Farmer just wished for or requested is, kind of, is the default process, right? You're just asking, can I, can I start the race now? That's what we're doing, right? And then you're gonna go through the bid processes, and you certainly, you know, you came here to pay attention to the city council's wishes about notifications, and that's all part of the process either. So I think everybody's bringing up good points, and I think they're basically all gonna be covered in the process under normal circumstances, correct? So if we, if we pass the resolution as written, all those things will happen, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so with that, then I would, I would make a motion to, to adopt the resolution, but.
I need to interrupt real quick, I'm sorry. We have one more public comment.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Let's hear the public comment.
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. I'm speaking, this is Phyllis Johnson, I'm speaking as a concerned resident. I believe two questions should be answered by anybody connected with this particular project. Number one, what is the strongest material out there for the longest amount against the weather? We don't want to get it built now and all of a sudden, six months from now, you're gonna go build it because it fell down. What is the strongest material out there that's known? Next, what is the approximate lifespan of, of the wall as published? I think these two questions are very, very important for such a project. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we did address some of that and my disdain for that style of wall. It's also in the public record that it's required by the city to basically build the identical replacement. I have no doubt that Mr. Sellings will.
But that might be outdated and not work. That's why I'm putting out those two questions.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would, I would, I would propose a motion to adopt the resolution with one change, though I would like to see the bidding process include a repair option, whether or not people come back with zero of that, but I think in the bidding process, you might get some companies to come out. I would just like to see that be in. So if we can include that in the verbiage of the resolution, I would make a motion to adopt as written to get this ball started.
Second. So you're, you're making a, a resolution as written? We could just, I don't have to read the whole thing out?
Yeah, he's, he's basically.
With the, with the addition to include a repair option?
Yes.
Do I have a motion by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Councilman Lozano? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next is communication, the city clerks report.
Nance.
Communication by staff.
Mayor and council, tonight, we will hear from Director Selling, who has a couple items? Or do you need a break? Okay, all right, all right.
I'm gonna sit down because I'm gonna look at these flyers. Yes, a few things that I wanted to bring to the councils and the public's attention. So on Saturday, October 21st, in a few weeks, we're gonna have our free paint drop-off. So just want to remind everybody to mark their calendars and, and bring in any paint that you have, that you want to get rid of, and maybe sitting in your garage or your shed or whatever. That'll be from 8:30 to 12:30, again, on Saturday, the 21st, and that is at the market grounds. There's information on the website, or feel free to call the Public Works Department if you have any questions about that. Then I want to save the date, I guess, upcoming Walnut Avenue interchange project. We've been refining the alternatives that the consultants have been looking at for that. So there is a, a public meeting on Thursday, November 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and that is at the community room at the police department. And then the last thing I wanted to draw attention to is the Casuna's Groundwater Authority, which the city is one of seven agencies that comprise that authority. There are two fall public workshops coming up where folks can learn about, you know, how we're funding these efforts to get a general understanding of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or the history on the Casuna sub-basin, well monitoring, some of our projects that we have planned to, to address the overdraft that's occurring in the basin. And those workshops are gonna be on Wednesday, November 1st, from 5:30 to 7:30, and that is at the Hendrickson Hall in, in Herald. And then the second workshop is gonna be on Saturday, November 4th, and that's from 10:00 AM to noon, and that will be at the Wilton Community Center. So again, a couple of public workshops, if anyone's interested to learn more about groundwater and what's going on there. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. I wanted to take a moment, pinch hitting here for staff comments. We have a new member of the management team, and our newest manager in IT is Mr. Rodney Mort. He didn't know I was going to be introducing him to council, but you will see him from time to time, he's sitting there next to John, and he's the newest IT manager for the city. And so since he was here and blessing with our presence, I wanted to say a shout-out to him. He's a resident of Galt and actually worked here many years ago as a consultant when it was a team of, like, one, you, here in the city. So it's great to have Mr. Mort here. And then on the agenda item regarding the gray wall agreement, I just wanted to clarify one point. First, I want to say some days are easier than others, and this is one of those days. So when the question was asked about the monies for the gray wall, the council did in fact limit that number to $50,000, not to $60,000. The $60,000 number was reflective of the POA fundraising that was going to occur. And so the $50,000 contribution was already authorized by council. This $59,505 is the general fund allocation, which is going to be backfilled by that fundraising. So far, there's been an excess of $80,000 raised, so the total number of dollars raised will be that, at least $109,505. This transfer of the $59,505 allows the city to enter into, legally enter into this contract with Romo Studios with that backfill of that $59,505. I apologize for the council for misspeaking, and I clarified it with Tina on the side. And sometimes there's those kind of days, so I do apologize to council on that. And then lastly, the only thing from the police department is, it is pink patch month for breast cancer awareness. We do this every October, and so those members of the public who are interested could receive a pink patch at the police department lobby with a $10 donation. And then staff has put some information on social media about different ways to contact us through the mail, and Sergeant Hanson about obtaining one with a $10 payment, and then that will go to a local cancer awareness project for breast cancer. And with that, that's all the public comments from the directors this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Last is comments by city council members, future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, gave me the opportunity. Thank you for the staff, hard work, and their detailed report. Thank you for the public comment, and also thank you for the community member, Joanna's meeting tonight. I did attend a couple of events, Old Galt Festival. I have only seen great feedback from all these attendants at the Old Galt Festival. There was something for all ages grow. I know a lot of hard work into it. Thank you for the Galt Chamber, and especially thank you for the councilman Sean Farmer, and the long list of volunteer within the community. It would be not possible without you. This event was great. I also like to mention called former mayor Barbara Payne, she called me before the meeting. On the behalf of for, of former mayor Barbara Payne, she wanted me to thank you for the city staff and council for honoring her in the attendance at the last council meeting. She was very appreciated of the recognition. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sandu. Councilman Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, congratulations, Mr. Mort, welcome aboard. Try not to bug you too much for all the problems with my tablet, which are very frequent, by the way. Had some tonight, but we worked it out. I just wanted to say, my comments are basically just gonna be about regarding the festival. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec, who's not here tonight, for being very instrumental and partnering with us. Public Works, thank you for providing street closures. PD for providing security and for participating in the event with their booth. And just the city in general for partnering. On behalf of myself, thanks to the city for partnering with this event. Obviously, it wouldn't have been possible without the city being a part of it. And a big thank you to all the sponsors. You know, most of the sponsors in this event were really, well, 90% of them are probably small businesses, and these businesses continue to give out of their pockets, you know, they're hit by everything from Little League to whatever people come asking. And so they listened to the vision that we had, they put their money out, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without that funding. It was basically all, you know, it was a free event to the community, so basically we had to fund it in front and then hope we stayed under budget. So I want to say a big thank you to all the sponsors, there's so many, the list is long. And then next, thank you to the organizations that participated. There was very many, Rotary, for example, Councilman Lozano out there whipping up burgers at the Frosty, just slaving for hours, thousand burgers. So I appreciate Rotary, Lions Club, the teen center, the youth commission, the cheerleading organizations, the 4H, the FFA, the school districts, the historical society, many, I can't even remember them all, but I, you know who you are, thank you to everybody. I think we pretty much had every organization in town involved in some, in some manner. And then last but not least, you know, the, the, the chamber, all the hard work by Kat Sebold and Madison Delbrug for all the hard work behind the scenes, and burning the Midna Oil the night before to make sure that paperwork was turned in. And to the volunteers from the planning team, there's a core group of us who worked for months, still working, some of us this week, still putting stuff away, and the work continues, but it was a labor of love, and just want to say thank you for everybody who, who worked as part of the festival, so, thank you. And with that, I would say a reminder of the Saturday markets this weekend, they've been planning a big, big event for Saturday, so staff's been out there working hard. So if you're gonna catch the Saturday market this weekend, would be the one to do it. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I, I thought the Old Galt Festival went pretty well. I think it was very well attended, and certainly there was a line at the Galt Frosty from about 10:30 to probably 2:30, but it was very well done. I, I attended the Fourth Cannabis Forum on the 20th here at City Hall, there were about 20 attendees, and I will just leave it with this, that there was good conversation, interesting perspectives from a variety of our citizens, and I look forward to the conversation, hopefully next, next, in two weeks. And then lastly, had a tour of station, Fire Station 44 on Guild Street on the 28th. This is the new location for the CERT team that services Elk Grove and Galt. Many of our, many of the readily available volunteers are from the Galt area, so they've put it right down here, which is a great resource, not only for, for our citizens, but certainly for our law enforcement agency and partners. And their volunteers have been painting the inside, setting up a classroom there so they can have classes, so our citizens can, many probably could walk there and take the CERT classes, so keep an eye out for those. They're also, they've redesigned a room to make storage room for their emergency equipment, and they're in the process of gathering supplies and volunteers to paint the exterior. It's in pretty good shape still, so hopefully that will come to fruition in the coming months, and I'd encourage you, if you aren't a part of the CERT program, to certainly look into it. It's a great opportunity for those in the community that want to serve and help in emergencies as well as at events. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. To our newest IT employee, thank you for living and working in Galt, it's, it's very appreciated. The Old Galt Festival was, I attended it early, it was very lively, I liked all, all of the things I saw, there's a wide variety of people, of things for people to do. I am very appreciative of all the volunteers and the businesses, especially you, Mr. Farmer, you, you put a yeoman's work in. Thank you also, Mr. Lozano, for volunteering your time, it's much appreciated. And with that, we will end the meeting at 7:49 PM. Thank you.